Special meeting, July 20th, the Edmond City Council is now called to order. City council members, Assistant City Manager Steve Commons, City Attorney Steve Murdock, City Staff, and the citizens of the good city of Edmond, we'd like to welcome you to our July 20th special meeting. It's now called to order. Our purpose is to bring the citizens up to date with our last proclamation that was dated a week ago on July 13th. First, I'd like to introduce the Edmond City Council. I'll call them in order. First, let's start with Ward 1 Council Member David Chapman. David?
Hi.
Where are you broadcasting from, David?
I am in beautiful downtown Edmond in the Chapman House.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nick, can you introduce yourself to the audience?
Nick Massey, Ward 4, Edmond Pro Tem. I am in the Massey household in Hunter's Creek, Edmond.
Darrell, would you introduce yourself?
Darrell Davis, Ward 3, in my home in Ripple Creek.
Josh?
Hi, Josh Moore. I'm in my house in Ward 2, East Edmond.
The special meeting will be a virtual meeting tonight using Zoom with each member of the Edmond City Council participating from a remote site in their homes. The City Council has been meeting 18 weeks in a row to honor our commitment we made in March that we'd do our best to keep the citizens of Edmond informed about the latest activities, the status of city services, changes in the rules that we are following, and the guidance that we're getting from CDC and the state of Oklahoma, county health officials, and what the surrounding cities are also doing. Mr. Murdock, would you do the honor of reading the legal obligations associated with conducting a virtual meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Edmond City Council will close the council chambers and hold a special meeting in the city by video conference. This changes to protect the public health and while maintaining critical operations in accordance with recent changes to the open meeting act that's set out in Senate Bill 661, changes to find how to hold open meetings remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic and national emergency. During the City Council, members of the city staff will participate remotely via video conference, post an agenda, provide a notice to the public on how to watch and listen to connect with the meeting. Also, should a connection with any one of the council members present for the meeting be lost, the meeting will recess in order to reestablish the connection. We recess the media for a maximum of 30 minutes to reestablish the connection. If reconnection is not possible, the meeting will be reconvened Tuesday, July 21st, or later date and time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you. We also allow citizens to participate in using Zoom during this meeting. Casey, would you explain to the audience how this will work?
Yes, sir. So, we will actually, we'll ask everyone to leave your videos off so that we can save the screen space so that everyone can see the council members and key staff. When we do get to the portion of the meeting where the mayor asks for public comment, you can do that by using the raise hand feature. So, if you've joined the meeting via the Zoom app, you can raise your hand by going to the Participants tab, and if you've joined by calling in, you can raise your hand by hitting star 9. And we will go through one by one. People will have five minutes. You'll need to introduce yourself, first name and last name. We will turn on your video and your microphone at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We've been doing this special meeting, or a regular council meeting, every Monday since we started in March. We've had 18 meetings in a row, as I said earlier, and we've amended our proclamation now 12 times. During this past week, there've been quite a few things that have happened. For example, the Oklahoma Governor announced that he hadn't changed his policies, and he would not endorse a mandatory mask policy for the state. He did that while he was quarantined, and I guess he is now a victim of the virus also. The Oklahoma County offices have met twice in the last week or so, and they have not endorsed a mandatory mask policy. Within the past week, Oklahoma City has adopted a mandatory mask policy. There are quite a few exceptions for that, but they do provide for fines, police responses for citizens, and a complicated, sort of complicated permit rule for businesses and institutions renewing their applications. I noticed that Tulsa, Stillwater, and Norman have also passed a mandatory mask policy. I can speak, I think, for Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City, in many, did not do this because the citizens wanted to see more people wearing masks in public. They did it because their case numbers were increasingly significantly above their already high numbers. The county health department was concerned and changed their mind to recommend that policy change. And that's what happened in that particular case, in my mind. In the news, we heard that a major national store like, have adopted company-wide policies that required not only masks for their employees, but also for their customers. In addition to protecting their employees, the companies decided to do it, I think, to eliminate any confusing policies between municipalities, and it also promotes the company's desire to be, to express a concern for consumer safety. The state of Texas to our south is having significant COVID case increases, significantly more hospitalizations, and they're having problems in their compliance. I think they've also adopted a mandatory mask policy. And I think the governor of Arkansas today just announced that they have a mandatory mask policy today. There's a lot of things that have happened in one week. Last week, we adopted a new proclamation that we thought was unique. We thought it strongly answered the question for our community and for our citizens. This proclamation did strongly recommend that our citizens wear masks and encouraged businesses to require masks, but it was not mandated to wearing, partly because in our minds, it would be difficult to enforce. We did do some affirmation and required all businesses to post their policies regarding masks. This is a sample of what staff came up with as our policy, and it covers both whether the employees wear the mask, whether the customers are asked to wear the mask, and whether the company applies social distancing. You'll see this on more and more businesses. This was, this was not a mandatory form, but it answered the questions that we wanted them to answer. Some of the businesses have chosen to do some other form in accordance with their logos or whatever that accomplishes the same thing. This was just a recommendation form in lieu of them designing their own. We adopted this proclamation because we thought it was unique. Our goal is compliance. We believe that this effort would produce more support than mandating. I still believe that, and I think the rest of the council still believes that, and that is our goal for our city, to make sure we have more compliance and more participation in the wearing of masks. Every meeting, we've talked about numbers for Edmond, and for some time, the breakdown of our cases for our city was not available originally. We lobbied with the state and county officials hard for that data, and we have accumulated numbers now that are meaningful, and we may share with you during our meeting today. The HIPAA rules can be a real roadblock for municipal officials trying to find out what's happening in our community. But we'd like to think that our significantly lower numbers are a result of soliciting cooperation and public understanding and support within our community. We will talk about these numbers again tonight. Our favorite, my favorite CDC expert was Dr. Deborah Burks. She has always been one that was always about the numbers, and so we will discuss numbers in some depth, hopefully, tonight. Before we ask for our reports from city staff, would any of the council members like to make a comment at this time, or just about some of the events, or maybe some of the phone calls and emails that you've gotten this week?
I didn't get any phone calls or email.
You changed your number, then. Nick, did you have a lot of calls?
Yeah, I had a lot of, a lot of calls, a lot of emails, but I'll reserve my comments for later.
Okay. Darrell, you didn't get any calls, did you?
I got a call five minutes before we came on air.
Josh?
Yes.
Well, anyway, let's, let's start with Mr. Murdock and ask him to give us the status of our last proclamation, and maybe some rundown on what some of the Oklahoma City changes were, and the state's, the governor's status. Mr. Murdock, could you advise us, please?
Mayor, Council, on your agenda tonight is one item, discussion and consideration of amendments to the revised declaration of emergency regarding COVID-19 that was issued last Monday night. As you will recall, the City Council voted to make certain changes to the previously issued declaration of emergency that was issued on June 15th. You mentioned some of those changes, including the requirement that businesses open to the public, required to post conspicuous signs, and that deadline was today, that was the deadline we asked for people to comply, to inform customers and users and visitors of the business's policies and practices regarding face coverings and masks, as well as any requirements for customers and users and visitors. This change did not require the wearing of masks. However, all on-premise staff in restaurants, wineries, taverns, shopping malls, food courts, food halls, cafeterias, bars, nightclubs, and any other food services are strongly encouraged to wear facial masks or coverings while on duty. There is also language in our proclamation related to staggered seating so the customer groups are socially distanced. Citizens are also reminded to continue taking extra measures to put a physical distance of six feet between themselves and other people, wash their hands regularly, and stay updated on the resources and information available to the Oklahoma City County Health Department, the Oklahoma State Department of Health, and the Center for Disease Control. The revised declaration of emergency is in effect until August 3, 2020. At this time, staff is not specifically recommended any specific amendments to the revised declaration of emergency. There is not an item on tonight's agenda to consider an ordinance regarding facial covering or masks. If an ordinance is to be considered, it has to be on a future city council agenda for consideration. Just mentioned briefly, since you asked, Mayor, about Oklahoma City, they did pass an ordinance on Friday afternoon this past week regarding facial coverings or masks. The new ordinance basically said that all people in Oklahoma City must wear face coverings when, while inside any indoor place open to the public. They defined feet face coverage include a uniform piece of material that securely covers a person's nose and mouth, remains affixed in place without the use of one's hands and/or a face shield. There were numerous, I believe there were 10 different exceptions. Some of those include persons under the age of 10, that's required by school or daycare to wear a face covering, and several others. There was also enforcement provision, beginning with a fine, I believe, of $9, up to a possible fine of up to $100. There was also a defense to the ordinance related to personal provision of documents demonstrated through position has verified that wearing a face covering could cause impairment or constitute a hazard to the individual, so have a defense to life endangerment of the ordinance. There was also an ordinance that we looked at from the city of Tulsa. I believe that went into effect this past Wednesday. We also had seen ordinances from Norman and also from Stillwater, and I believe other communities that discussed similar ordinances or thinking about doing that. You mentioned the state of Oklahoma. As you mentioned in our last meeting, we discussed the executive order that went into effect on July 10th. At that time, one of the details of that order was that identified a code system, and the Oklahoma COVID-19 Alert System was a four-tiered risk measurement tool, was corresponding color categories that identify the current COVID-19 risk level. As of July 18th, I believe it is, the COVID Alert System identifies Oklahoma County at a moderate risk, and it's part of the moderate risk phase. It identifies certain guidelines for businesses, and dealing with high-cost businesses advised to operate under stricter public health protocols, diet and service operated under elevated cleaning and hygiene measures, and for telework options where possible. General guidelines for individuals who could consider wearing face coverings in public, limit out when they travel, wash hands often 20 seconds, maintain physical distance of six feet, don't touch your face, stay home if you're sick, and things that we've heard and talked about previously. That's where the state of Oklahoma is, as I understand it, and it relates to Oklahoma County. There's several counties that are in the orange category, and a majority of them are in yellow, a few in green, and there's no counties as of the last determination that are in the red, red category. So, at that point, staff's prepared to add for any other questions that the council might have. Thank you.
Any questions, Council, for Mr. Murdock?
No.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Steve. Mr. Larry Stevens is absent tonight. We've asked our Assistant City Manager Steve Commons to fill in and give us an update on how things are going for the city and our business signage program.
Mr. Bullock, as we talked about earlier, it just went into effect today. To my knowledge, we've had no complaints about it from the public, because we're typically responding with any, we're responding to issues on a complaint basis. Our process would be that we would go and try to educate the business and provide them information to help them come into compliance with the regulation. That hasn't come up yet, so hopefully, everybody is trying to at least communicate on their door before they enter what the expectations are, and that was the purpose of that. So, people could then make a choice if they want to frequent that business, or if they don't want it for whatever requirement that they have. That's a choice that they would have. As terms of our operations, as we've talked about before, our parks are open. Actually, one area that's been very well utilized has been Arcadia Lake. We've had a tremendous last few months of activities out there. Some people have discovered the lake, but maybe didn't, didn't know what all it had available to it. So, again, we're trying to keep up with the demands out there. The golf course, if you enter the golf course now, the clubhouse, you have to wear a mask. You do not have to wear a mask while you're playing, but we do ask that when you come into the building and interact with the staff, that you're wearing a mask. That same standard applies at our city buildings. There's a number of them that are closed. You can make arrangements. There's phone numbers to call on the door, or you can call ahead of time and try to make arrangements. If you need to make an appointment with somebody, we can work it out to where you can come to the building if that's necessary, but again, we'll require a mask if you enter the building. That's basically kind of where we stand right now in all our activities. Nothing's, the only thing that's changed is we've become a little tighter in terms of access to our building.
Any other questions, Council, for Steve?
No.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Commons. Matt, are you out there? We asked Matt Stillwell, our Director of Emergency Management. I like, like your background there. Can you give us an update on the recent cases and how we're doing average-wise for the city of Edmond?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I pray you're staying all safe. As we all know, numbers do continue to increase. In Edmond, we're up to 456 cases here, so it's roughly 100 more cases than we had one week ago. We are seeing still an upward trend of new cases. Hospitalizations and ICU admittance are still, are still rising as we look at the numbers. One thing to consider, today's numbers were extremely low, but there's a reason behind that. Well, we received information from the state health department that there's a data entry issue that they're having, that they're working through, so they didn't want us to really count on the numbers that we saw today. I think it stresses the importance to not look at days individually, but to look at periods of time. Generally, if you look at it in seven-day increments, you kind of get an idea as far as where we're going. We do expect some sort of spike here in the next couple of days as they rectify this problem with the data entry. So, when I first saw the numbers this morning, it was kind of encouraging, but then the announcement came out as far as the issues that they're having. So, we will continue to look at these numbers. We had a good discussion among staff this morning. We're working on some charts and that kind of stuff to kind of look at all of this stuff in seven-day increments to maybe give us that picture as to which way the trends are going. So, that's kind of where we're at. I'm glad to answer any questions that, Mayor, you have, or any of the council.
The, the number of 460 is essentially about half of 1%. Is that a fair, fair example of increases?
From, from one day to the next, or?
No, or the total of our population.
Total of population. Yeah, I'd have to look at the population. Calculator in my head's not working too well, but yeah, we're right there. Like you said, right around 460. Our population's just over 90,000, so we'd have to do the math real quick on that.
Okay. But the other part was, we went from an average of about 6.9 for a couple, for a couple of weeks to 16.8 average cases per week, per day. It's sort of a 200% increase, but when you start low, 200% is not that big a number. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, yeah, and you have to look at, I think, at the, the dynamics that are behind the testing. So, we've talked a little bit about the fact that early on, and really until the last month or so, most of the testing was done for people that were demonstrating symptoms. There's a lot of contact tracing testing that's going on now. There's folks that are going in for tests that they, that know they've been exposed to someone that came back positive. So, those types of tests historically weren't done, so just, just from sheer numbers, we're going to see an increase in positive tests, considering the number of, the asymptomatic cases that we're seeing. That's an indicator that, of course, those numbers are going to go up naturally based on the way and why people are being tested. Another interesting, real graph, or the pie, pie chart that I saw just before we came on tonight, is more than 50% of the positive cases right now are between, in the demographic of between 18 and 49 years old. So, early on, a lot of our, and the bulk of cases that came back positive were really in an older demographic. So, that would be an indicator also along the lines of what you're speaking there, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
On that, Steve or Matt, what is, what is the city of Edmond's policy for our employees if somebody did test positive? What is, what is the policy for them to come back to work?
They would have, they would have, they would have to, before they could come back to work, they would have to come back with a negative test result before they could return to work, first of all. We have procedures in place, so when we find out an employee tests positive, we do the contact tracing as to where they've been, who they've been with, and effectively, if it's, it's an office area, effectively clean the office area. We have the supplies to do that internally, and, and then make employees aware. We first determine if there are people that meet the thresholds of, of contact. So, 15 minutes of contact within what they were considered infected is a kind of a threshold where we would probably have the employee that was contacted also tested at that point if they would test positive. So, again, we have protocols in place to, to work through step by step how we'd react if employee tested positive.
And it's, it's one negative test to, to come back to work?
Yeah, I believe it's only one negative test.
Got you. Got you.
We've now had a couple of employees, right, test positive?
Yeah, we have, we've had a few employees test positive, yes.
Thank you very much. Have we had any, in your reports within, in dealings with the hospital, the health department, in their tracing, have they found any areas of concern to the city in terms of where the transmission happened, like a restaurant or?
Yeah, really good question there, Mayor. Let me, just let me get to a chart that I have here. So, the, the city county health department, as you know, came out with the original seven hotspots, and, and that kind of got pushed back to five. It's back up to six now. So, there were, and then a little more than 30% of the cases, even though these two facilities are listed separately, are bars and restaurants. So, but those are two of the six. Intimate gatherings, which include weddings and funerals and house parties and that kind of stuff. Daycares have now been added as a hotspot here in the metro area, faith-based venues, and then there's the gyms and athletic events, and the way they explain that is where individuals are breathing heavily and in close proximity to others. So, those are really the concern, concerning areas this week. It looks like they're on top of this data, and on a weekly basis, they're going to report back to us what those hotspots are.
So, but the gymnasium, or the gym activities that go on outdoors are, are pretty safe?
Well, I think it depends on close proximity. So, so if you're in an event where, you know, you're sweating it up, and you're not real close to somebody, and I think you're in better shape than if you're playing full, full-contact sport where you're all sweated up and, and there's a lot of touching going on, so.
Any other questions, Council, for Matt?
Yes, Matt, I had one question. When you gave the age group of 18 to 49, what period is, time period is that for the past two to three weeks?
Yeah, let me bring that up there. That's going to be overall, it appears, and, and we can dig deeper to see what those numbers are, but I think the numbers were so low in the beginning that the overall is probably a good indication of what we're seeing recently because of the huge jump in numbers that we've seen over the past month.
Are you pulling up a part that we're supposed to see, Matt?
No, I've just, I just have a couple of files here that I'm using for reference.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt. I'm sorry, Darrell.
Did that answer your question, Councilman?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anyone else, Council?
Thanks, Matt. You're welcome. Stay safe.
Next, I'm sort of looking for, I guess, some council comments on, I had a chance to go out and check some frontages of the businesses around town. Downtown seems to have most of their signs up. I saw quite a few downtown, and I'm real pleased about that. Then I went to my neighborhood, they asked, they didn't have theirs up yet, so. Have you all checked that, or observed any of the signs up yet?
Yes, every establishment I went to this weekend, I would say 90% of them had some type of signage up, either our template or something that they had generated themselves.
Yeah, I think that's the case. Most of the ones I've seen, I suspect the ones out there that don't have it is, they may not be plugged into different sources of information, and they just don't know yet, but they'll, they'll find out, and, and I'm sure we'll get there. I have not heard from anybody that thought it was a bad idea.
I've heard some very nice comments. Any other thoughts, Council? I'm sort of the view that we'd sort of like to see some of this bare fruit, shall we say, and see how it works, and follow up on it, and maybe have staff do some follow-ups on that one. Is there any other comments before we go to citizens' comments?
Yes, I do have one other question for Matt. So Matt, since this past week, a lot of the major big box stores, national and local have put up their mask policy basically for their employees. Do you think we have to wait about two to three weeks before we see any impact from that decision being made this past weekend?
Yeah, very good point. I would say at least one to two, and it really depends on what's going on with the, this issue the health department's having. I'm hoping it's not a real severe issue that they're having with the data entry, but as we've gone through this whole process, we're pretty comfortable in saying, you know, a one to two week delay is reasonable to look at when the case has actually occurred. So that's kind of where we're at. So as long as we don't have a major problem with this reporting issue that they're having, I would say one to two weeks to be accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Casey, do we have Mark Nash that's out there?
Yes.
Okay. I was really struck by some of his comments and some of his numbers, shall we say. If it would be possible to start with him before we start with some of the other folks?
Are you ready for public comment at this time or?
Ready, Council? Are we ready, Council, for some public comments now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and start them. I appreciate it.
So the way that public comments will work, you have up to five minutes total. We ask that you use the raise hand feature. You can find that in the participants tab. If you are in the Zoom meeting, if you've called in, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. You'll be asked to share your first and last name. We will be timing. You'll get a one minute warning and then at five minutes, we'll move on to the next person. Mr. Mayor, you wanted to start with Mark Nash, is that correct?
If you would, if that can make that happen, I don't know.
Yeah, just one moment.
Hey, Mark, how are you doing? You have to unmute.
I've unmuted. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mark Nash, 16, Kimbrough Circle. Very quickly, let me give you all a little bit of the background for anyone who doesn't know. I'm president of Pinnacle Partners West. We're a process improvement, quality improvement consulting firm who does a considerable amount of data analysis for manufacturing, healthcare and government. I'm working with one of my partners who is a PhD statistician based in Knoxville, Tennessee, and we have been tracking the data for the state of Oklahoma, Edmonds, since Matt was able to start giving the information on Edmonds and then also Knox County, Tennessee. Mayor, you, I think you really summed it up really well and to kind of expand a little bit on what Matt Stillwell was saying, the tool we use is called Control Chart, better labeled as a process behavior chart, which allows us not to try to model what's going on with the virus, but it's actually to understand the behavior of the general public in relation to policy decisions that government entities are making. We would prefer to look at the data as a whole picture, looking at daily new cases reported, new hospitalizations on a daily basis and new deaths on a daily basis. We have that for the state of Oklahoma. All we have for Edmonds, though, on a daily basis is new cases reported. There's probably going to be someone out there who will say that's not a good number. We're not trying to say how many cases we have in Edmonds. We're trying to interpret the behavior and what that means for the spread in the city. We believe that the tool we're using, a process behavior chart, actually gives the city council better, faster data if something happens. Casey, is it possible for me to share my screen so that I can show one of these charts?
Go ahead, make it, Casey.
I cannot make that change mid-meeting, no.
Okay, okay. So let me explain what has been going on. We had a run from June 15th to July 5th where the city did experience, on average, a daily average of 6.9 new cases a day. We have what we call an upper limit, which is the expected variation in the day-to-day new cases of 18. So if we saw, if we saw 19 new cases, we'd say something was going on. If it's just 18, we're looking at it saying that's just normal variation. However, on July 6th, moving forward, on the 6th through the 19th, we had a statistical run which changed it and actually, Mr. Mayor, it reduced, when we added the 18th, 19th, 18th and 19th to that, it reduced the average from 16.9 to 15.9 because we were starting to see a little bit of a drop. And of course, the last two days do have an impact on it. And Matt is dead on correct. When we looked at the state data, when we plugged in the state's number this morning, we got a signal that said something's wrong. There's something that needs to be investigated. We have a way to look at these numbers using what's called statistical rules. I'm not going to try to get into much debate about how it works, but as long as the daily numbers land between what we call the upper limit and lower limit, that's the normal variation we expect to see. If we were to get two out of three consecutive days that were too high, up around?
One minute.
Upper limit, we would, we then say, here's an event that needs to be investigated, the city council needs to talk about it. If we had four out of five days in a row that were above, I mean, in case where we're at right now, above about 24, we would say the same thing. If we had eight consecutive days that were above the daily average, we'd say, here's something to take action on. Here's something to investigate. We can give that to the city on a daily basis. We can work with whoever needs it. Me and Dr. Ward have said that we're going to provide that service for anybody who wants it at no cost, simply because we're concerned citizens and I've been in it long enough and I know, I know everybody here on the council and most of the staff in attendance tonight. We're going to do what it takes to get us out of this and we want to be able to give the council actionable data that says things are getting better or things are getting worse and have a conversation. And if you can give it a signable cause and say you know what happened, for instance, the increase was caused by infections in a nursing home and that the people aren't going to get up and go out and infect everybody else, you don't have to panic. Just like what we're seeing on Tuesdays with the Tuesday rebound or weekend rebound for the state last week, everyone threw their arms up when we hit 1,075 on a Tuesday. But the truth is, we're seeing that every single week. 16 out of 19 weeks since this started, Tuesdays have been one and a half times higher than either Sunday or Monday. So we're trying to paint a picture for you. We would love to have, we would love to have the opportunity to work with you more to give you that information.
Thank you very much, Mark. Josh, you got a question?
Yeah, are we, can we ask Mark questions on this?
Sure.
So Mark, in that, what would, in exponential growth or compound growth, what would be some, what would be some rules that you would see or some effects that you would see that would, that would show compound growth?
So when we talk about what's going on right now, we're really looking at, if we had two out of three days where we were, I believe the number is 35 cases on a daily basis, two out of three days in a row, that, that would be significant increase for you all to have a conversation about. Likewise, if you had four out of five consecutive days where it was 20, over 24, I have to verify those numbers since I can't throw, share the screen, but over 24, same thing. And of course, eight days over that 15.9, so 16 or more, eight consecutive days, that would also say something's going on. Likewise, if all those were underneath the average, it would say things are getting better. Let's have a conversation about what we're doing right and can we ease back on some things?
Appreciate that very much, Mark. Thank you for your contributions. Appreciate that. You bet. Casey, who's the number? Who's next?
Okay, we're going to bring up Sean Hiddle. Again, Sean, if you would, please give your first and last name once we get you, your video up and get you unmuted. Okay, you have five minutes. Up to five minutes.
Okay, my, my name is Sean Hill and I live during Ward Three, right on the border of Oklahoma City, so South Edmonds. And I would strongly encourage the city council to consider a mandatory mask mandate as they had done in Oklahoma City and Norman and Stillwater, Tulsa, on Saturday. I went to my area liquor store, which is just across the street, but it's technically in Oklahoma City. All the staff had masks, all the customers were masked. That was the first time I had seen that. I went to the Yon Q near my house, which again is in Oklahoma City technically. Every staff member was wearing a mask, every customer was wearing a mask. And today, my daughter's daycare notified us that everyone needs to wear a mask when they come in and all the staff will be wearing masks. And that was the first time, and any of those three days, all in Oklahoma City, you know, had taken those steps. So I, you know, I would like to see that in Edmonds. I would, you know, I want to support Edmond businesses. I want to put my dollars back in the Edmond economy. I don't want to have to go to Oklahoma City to feel safe. And so, you know, for all those reasons, I would, you know, ask you guys to consider, you know, at some point in the future here, you know, taking that extra step to do a mask mandate. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, next up, we have, let's see, we have Cheryl W. Cheryl, let's get you on, just a moment. Okay, you have five, up to five minutes.
I'm back. I just wanted to thank you all for your common sense approach last week. And then I also want to thank you all because you responded to my emails that I sent. I would like to see Edmond continue on this path that we have and allow the process to work. Right now, we have businesses who are complying, they want to do best for their customers. We have customers who are complying, doing what they need to do best for their businesses to shop and spend money in Edmond. But not only that, here's what I am seeing happening in Edmond. People are going to work, people are out running their dogs, going to the parks, like you said, they're going to Arcadia. People are beginning to resume life. And isn't that where we want to go at this point? I know they say the numbers were skewed from the last few days, but what if they weren't really skewed? What if the cases are not increasing? From my perspective, our lives are normal and what I'm seeing is I know people who get a false positive, they go back two days later, they get a negative. I've only known of one person, one, who was actually hospitalized for COVID-19. Nobody else. I go to church, I worship with my church family, we go to the grocery stores, we go out to eat. The restaurants, the restaurant workers, they go over and above board. They are the best ambassadors we have for Edmond. This is the thing I've seen in Edmond. We are now becoming proud to be Edmondites. I've lived here 32 years and I am seeing a city that's finally calming the fears, they're finally calming down the rhetoric, they're bringing the vitriol. And now there are people who still are angry and ugly, but that's their problem, that's not our problem. Let's continue on and see how this works out. I think you're wise to just measure it out under two, three weeks at least because I think we're finally making some headway. The numbers, I think, are going to be coming down even more so than normal. The testing will increase, but it's kind of like Governor Stitt. He tested positive, he felt bad for maybe a half day and he's back to work and he's feeling great. I probably had this back in February, I had a bad flu case with a negative flu test. Guess what? If I went to be tested today, I would probably test positive and I've not been sick a day since the end of February. So I'm just saying, let's just keep level headed, let's let this run its course right now and keep Edmond as a friendly, safe community that we all know we want to be. I appreciate you again. Thank you all for the emails you did respond back and thank you for your level heads, even when we're not always level headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Okay, next up, Fad F Khan.
Dr. Khan, welcome back.
Let's get you unmuted here, just, just a moment. Okay, you have five, up to five minutes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Fahad Khan and I spoke last week as well at the council meeting. Just a quick reminder about my qualifications, I have a master's of public health in health policy and epidemiology and 15 years of experience studying the implications of evidence-based policies that address diseases and the risk factors. So back in March, an article came out of how the pandemic will end, and it was probably one of the best articles that came out during the early phases of the pandemic and it talked about three possible coronavirus endgame scenarios. The first scenario was not too practical as it essentially talked about living in a bubble, a complete shutdown for an indefinite period. That was not a viable strategy, especially economically. Then there was a second scenario that involved dealing with the virus in a whack-a-mole style, stopping outbreaks here and there until a vaccine can be produced. This scenario was considered the best option, but also the most complicated one because it needed political will as well as public will in terms of implementing and following common sense, public health practices. Basically the three Ws, wash your hand, watch your distance, wear a mask. So a growing body of science and research and an overwhelming majority of health experts, they believe that these three Ws have shown to reduce, not eliminate, but produce person-to-person transmission of this virus. This is the strategy most of the health experts have been asking state and local governments to embrace. And then finally, the third scenario, the most dangerous one, involved letting the virus run its course. No wearing of masks, ignoring social distancing while opening your businesses, people, especially those under 35 years of age, ignoring the social distancing guidelines and going to bars and parties and social events without masks and then becoming infected and transmitting the virus to others. Basically, pretty much what we have been seeing here in Oklahoma. And that third scenario would, over time, leave behind devastated healthcare systems because the systems will not be able to cope up with the surge of patients. There will, there will be thousands of dead bodies, unstable education systems, collapsed economies. Unfortunately, it seems like we decided to embrace that third scenario in most parts of the country, including Oklahoma. So in other words, and people may not realize it, but that's a scenario that actually embraces the herd immunity without the vaccination. It's just a very, very bad idea. You will have to wait for 60 to 70% of the population to become infected with the virus to achieve herd immunity. So let's very quickly talk about this herd immunity approach and how it would apply to the city of Edmond. Population of Edmond is approximately 93,000 individuals. 60% of Edmond population would be approximately 56,000 individuals. So we are seeing that we would need this number of people, 56,000, to become infected in order to achieve herd immunity. So now let's see how many people will die in Edmond if 56,000 people are eventually going to be infected. Let's look at the case fatality rate for COVID-19, which is the proportion of people who die from COVID-19 among all individuals diagnosed with COVID-19 over a certain period of time. Across the world, that rate is 4.2%. Across US, that rate is 3.7%. Across Oklahoma, that rate is 1.8%. Across Oklahoma County, that rate is 1.2%. So let's not take any of those rates. The case fatality in Edmond has been 1%. That's 1% of those who were infected have died. That means we are saying that when 56,000 people in Edmond will become infected, 1% of 56,000 individuals, which is 560 people in Edmond, will also die. So now let this number sink in. And it's not like it will take 10 or 15 years for us to reach that number. People mistakenly perceive the coronavirus to grow in a linear manner, underestimating its actual potential for exponential growth. They don't realize how quickly this low number would spiral out of control. Think about doubles, 1, 2, 4, 8, 16, 32, and so on. So that consistent doubling of cases in a fixed period is the hallmark of exponential growth. So more than half of the states have mask requirements now. States like Arkansas, Alabama, Mississippi, they all, that remain at the bottom of health outcomes and health rankings, even they have implemented mask ordinances in the last week or so because they realize that they have to let science lead them out of this situation. So Mr. Mayor, you talked about Edmond having low numbers, according to state health department website, Edmond numbers as of today are 978 total cases and that includes 185 active cases with 10 deaths, and that is not even our real-time data. And that is not even our real-time data. Stillwater and Lauton, the two cities that have implemented very strong ordinances this month, they have a combined number of 900 total cases that include 116 active cases and nine deaths. Their combined total cases, their death numbers, their active cases are lower than Edmund numbers, and yet they have implemented strong mask ordinances. So what do they know that we don't? So in the end, we must follow what other states and cities outside our state and within our states have done in order to restart their economies while trying to control this outbreak. We can also control this outbreak, but we all have a role to play. It starts with you all, the council members, making a decision to implement a strong mask ordinance in Edmund for four to eight weeks with immediate effects.
Thank you very much, Dr.
Out of Stillwater.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Bruce. Bruce, if you would please, once we get your video and get you unmuted, if you would please give your first and last name, and you have up to five minutes. There you go.
Yes, my name is Bruce Doby. I live at 1732 Indian Springs Drive in Ward Four. I want to thank you gentlemen for your service. I would imagine that none of you expected to be navigating these complex public health decisions when you chose to run for office that you now hold. Nevertheless, you have been elected to serve your fellow citizens, and I appreciate that. Your leadership to the community is vital now, perhaps more than your predecessors ever experienced. I come from a little different perspective as a product of my current professional role as a clinician and as a medical educator. I was following the situation in China from early January, actually, and I spent that time from January to March attempting to alert my colleagues, family, and friends to the disruptions that we would eventually encounter. It seemed very clear to me. When the disruption reached our community, I found myself required to pivot to a position of combating misinformation. And I say all this to give context to the comments to follow. The public health crisis we find ourselves living in is extraordinarily complex. No expert, no expert would claim to have a grasp of all of the intricacies of complexity that are involved. However, I have observed the common trait of successful leaders in various roles navigating these challenging times. And that is their realization and acknowledgement of the complex nature of the situation. Fortunately, we have at our disposal a very well-equipped Oklahoma County Health Department that is in part funded by the citizens of our community and offers their professional analysis and recommendations to our community. This situation requires an epidemiologist. And I mean no disrespect, but it does not require a data scientist, it does not require a statistician. It requires a very specific role of epidemiology and public health expert. And I would encourage the council to take full advantage of this Oklahoma County resource to navigate this complex situation. Throughout my interactions with colleagues, patients, family, and friends, the influence of cognitive bias has become very clear. Cognitive bias is a part of the human mind. It's not something that we should be ashamed of. It's something we should, not something we should ignore either. The natural response of the majority to this global health situation is to minimize the risk to our way of life through a combination of cognitive dissonance and confirmation bias. They might say, what is happening in Houston or even New York couldn't possibly happen here. Everything seems normal. And it's critical to understand that these cognitive bias responses are universal. And we can see that as the virus has spread throughout the globe and even into our neighboring states. But reality does not succumb to our biases. The reality of this situation is not a hoax. Or the, and the worst fate may await those that hold to their cognitive bias as the longest. Edmund is no different than any other metropolitan suburb, and we must look at it through this lens. I applaud you for protecting the employees of the city of Edmund by returning to restricted public access at most city offices. Based on the language of this order, this is, in quote, "in response to the increasing number of COVID-19 cases in Edmund and Oklahoma County." "This change is being made for the safety of employees and citizens that interact with them," end quote. I do not find it noteworthy that there is recognition of a situation of such significance to enact these restricted access orders and masks for the protection of employees and citizens that engage in the city offices, and yet there is an absence of implementing the policies that public health experts have determined is essential for the protection of the citizens of the community and essentially the workers that interact in the community. Our municipal neighbors have set a standard to protect the community as a whole through face coverings for all participating in indoor public gatherings. The same virus exists across city lines in Edmund. Face coverings are the extreme of mitigation strategies. In fact, face coverings are a common sense and very middle ground strategy to prevent more severe and impactful mitigation strategies while also preserving health and life.
One minute.
But in addition to other proven strategies. I believe it is Edmund's best interest, in Edmund's best interest, to reciprocate with our municipal neighbors with a similar clear standard of requiring face coverings in public indoor settings in addition to the already established settings or mitigation strategies. Anything less than this is a, is a, is a burden to businesses and organizations and moves that burden to them, in my opinion. I, again, thank you for your service to, to our community. I will make sure that you have my information to each of you, specifically the Ward Four Councilman, and make myself available to assist you in introductions to epidemiologists and any other way that I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce, for your service and glad to have you back out of China. Next, who's next?
Okay, next up is Bushra Siddique. Okay, you have up to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Dr. Bushra Siddique. I'm an infectious disease consultant. I practice, I live in Edmund and practice in Edmund and Oklahoma City. I wanted to comment today because I've treated COVID patients and I've lost some COVID patients, and it's been a harrowing experience. I would like to advocate for strong support for citywide ordinance that would mandate Edmund residents to wear masks in indoor public places, and I would like to focus that on schools, especially with regards to schools reopening. Most importantly, I'm a mother of two children. Health and medical community has been recommending this based on evidence for reduced transmission, mostly for the safety of our community. So I want to take a moment to comment on the science behind this recommendation. Masks are predominantly used as a method of source control. They prevent the infected person from passing the infection onwards, whether they are symptomatic or asymptomatic. Basically, they prevent larger expect droplets from evaporating into smaller droplets to prevent the droplet to, from traveling further. Several studies were done. There was a large meta-analysis of 72 studies published in The Lancet that showed a decrease in transmission by 85% if masks were worn universally. We'd like for the masks to be worn by 100% of the population, but we'll take 80 with, with a wink, you know. But we really would like 100% compliance on this issue. Masks help. Science tells us that. I really want to comment on spread by asymptomatic people here because it's something that we are not taking into, into consideration. The rate of positivity for our state, barring the last two days of skewed data, was about 10% rate of positivity, which is double what Johns Hopkins tells us to be at. We should be at 5%, which means that we are not testing adequately as of yet in the state. So that being said, asymptomatic individuals, people we have missed because we have not tested adequately, are able to transmit up to account for about 45% of spread and transmission, between 40 to 60%. This is a big struggle right now, and the only preventative, the easiest preventative measure we have to keep our businesses open to get these kids back at school is masks, which is, it's just a very simple thing for us to do. I, I am lucky enough to technically, it's no crystal ball, but lucky enough to technically be a low-risk individual right now. But I feel that I owe it to the community to be able to do something. A simple thing is wearing a mask to keep the community open, keep the kids safely in school, and to make sure that our community acts as a community and is able to serve, the businesses are able to survive. Hopefully, if we can mandate masks and reduce transmission, we can get students back to school. I feel strongly about recommending that the council works with epidemiologists and public health experts have another meeting to address school, safe school reopening and to ensure that we have safe school reopening guidelines. Our numbers are still small, and we can still control and prevent this in Edmund. We are lucky. I would be happy to work with the council if need be. And I guess the statement was much, took less time than anticipated, so I'm out of words other than I appreciate your service to the
Thank you very much, ma'am, doctor.
Okay, next up is on the phone. It's 405-778-8989.
Yes, hello. My name is Chris McNeil, and I've got a business here in downtown Edmund. I had a couple of points, not all coronavirus-related, so hopefully I can try to maybe touch base on some of those as well, unless there's a
Keep it to the topic, the discussion in our meeting, please, okay?
Okay, well, I, on my other topic, the mayor has not responded to the voicemail I left him. So perhaps he'll get around to doing that shortly. In terms of the last several speakers, I guess, if we want to keep it specific to the coronavirus, they've all talked about the effectiveness of wearing masks. What I've read and heard and seen, all the evidence shows that this virus is too small for a mask to really filter. Some of the N95 masks certainly are effective, I think, is what the evidence shows. But most of the other masks, the surgical masks, the homemade masks, the cloth masks, even cloth-type masks you buy at stores, they're clearly marked on the box that those masks do not filter out coronavirus transmission. So for the most part, if you're walking through Edmund or walking around town, you'll see very few people wearing the N95 mask and most people wearing a homemade mask or a cloth mask or a surgical mask. So all of these people are wearing masks that have zero efficacy for filtering out the coronavirus. So if that's the case, a mask mandate will literally do nothing but make all these people feel better. And so it appears that either we've lost the ability to think using common sense or it'll just make everybody feel good that if we mandate kids and myself and whomever else wear a mask, that it'll somehow be effective, but it's not effective. The boxes clearly show these masks do nothing to prevent the spread of coronavirus. So if you were, as a city council, going to pass some sort of ordinance, if you passed an ordinance that said everyone must wear an N95 mask, that would seem to make sense because that mask is the only one that prevents the spread. All other masks are ineffective. So that would be just my two cents, and I'd ask you just to use common sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A point that I'd like to make, and I think Nick, you could probably chime on this. We get a lot of voicemails left on our phones. It takes us a while to find those sometimes. It would be much easier if you were to put your questions in a form of something writing that we could, we could answer. And we've, it's just, it makes it a lot easier for this gentleman and for us to have a response if we have something out there. Not that we're, it's going to be difficult to answer all of the emails that we get. But it certainly is easier than, I think they showed I missed 15 emails this afternoon, or voicemails on my phone this afternoon. So emails work a little better. And if you want, want your comments to be heard and you want a return call, please send an email. Thank you. Just a suggestion. Casey?
Okay, next up is Gwen's iPad.
That's me.
Go ahead.
I'm Gwen Sims of 2913 North Trail Ridge Road. Was that guy that was conned that spoke last week, is he an Edmund resident or not?
He's not.
Why was he allowed to speak again, then?
Well, he was a doctor and I did that out of respect.
Oh, okay. Well, I have doctor friends too that I respect, but they aren't city residents and they shouldn't be speaking on here. As far as I'm concerned, that was totally wrong because last week I wanted to speak and didn't get a chance because he spoke last and the rest of us that had our hand up didn't get to speak. So I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but here's my feelings. I have a relative in the healthcare system, okay? And I don't want the healthcare system overwhelmed with, you know, COVID patients like it was before. I don't want to see any more deaths from it, but there's going to be deaths, okay? We can't control who lives and who dies. Only God in heaven can do that. When your number's up, it is up, okay? I know people who have had the virus, who have totally recovered and come back to work where I work. And this is not a life death for everyone. Like I said, before you're born, God has already written the last day down that you will live on this earth. And when it's your time, there's nothing, not hell or high water, that can stop it. So if you want to push all your fear tactics and listen to all the data and everything else, you know, you're welcome to do that. It's a free-thinking world here, as far as I can tell, still, anyway. I like to think of myself as one of those that does some free-thinking and a lot of reading as well. But mandatory mask-wearing does no good. It gives people a false sense of security. And like the other gentleman said, an N95 is the only one, and they have to be fitted to each individual. I know my relative that works in the healthcare system. They have to be fitted by a professional to be fitted to each individual so they get the right fit. Otherwise, you are doing absolutely no good for anyone, yourself or anyone around you. We are required, where I work, to wear a mask. People that come in are required to put a mask on. It's like, why mandate it when people are doing it already? Why make, why make the ones who are responsible, mature, good citizens of Edmund, Oklahoma, pay the price for the ones who are not? And we are doing our, already. We don't need a mandate telling us what our rights are and what we should and shouldn't be doing. And I'm sorry, but the ones of you who vote for this, I hope you don't get voted into your position the next time it rolls around. And I hope I'm being respectful to you. I appreciate Nick for responding to my emails last week and this week as well. I believe he is my councilman, Ward Four. And I just, I really am a little bit frustrated right now because I've been out and about in the public and stores and everywhere. People, more people are wearing masks, but they aren't doing one bit of good by giving them a sense of security, a false sense of security. So you guys just sit up there and be in charge and listen to all the doctors and datas and all of that stuff, but you're really to be answering to constituents. And I would really appreciate seeing some of that, seeing a little respect for those of us who have been good citizens of the great city of Edmund, Oklahoma, United States of America. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Gwen.
Okay, next up, we have Matt Blair. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and Councilman. My name is Matt Blair. I live in Miley Hill neighborhood in Ward Three. I want to thank you all for your willingness to serve in the positions that you're in for the extra time that you've been spending the past 18 weeks doing that. I know there's a considerable amount of, I guess, requests that are, that are being asked of you right now, and I hope in the next couple of minutes I can try to take some of that pressure off of you. I know the past couple of callers have commented on the effectiveness of masks. I won't spend a lot of time on the effectiveness of masks, but I, I will say, one of the, the, the surgical masks are designed for sterile environments. They're not designed to, to be worn in public. They're, they're designed to block large particle droplets and splashes, and they don't protect against small particles like COVID-19. N95 masks are effective. They've proven effective to the person who's wearing them in contaminated environments. They can filter particles as small as 0.3 microns. Coronavirus is, is anywhere from 0.6 to 1.4 microns. And so N95 masks do protect the wearer from, from contaminants in the air, however. So N ninety-five masks do protect the wearer from, from contaminants in the air, however, there's, the respirators are designed to filter air coming in, they're not designed to filter air going out. So while they do protect the wearer, they don't protect anyone else that, that that person is around, they don't block any of the air that's being exhaled through those respirators. Fabric face coverings, I won't spend a lot of time on, I think we can most likely agree that if surgical masks and, and N ninety-fives aren't effective, then the homemade cloth masks are probably less effective than, than those previous two. So I think we can see at best, a person wearing an N ninety-five mask can protect themselves, but there's nothing they can, they, they're not protecting anyone else around. Now, I want to shift and talk about responsibilities. As you likely know, there's four basic forms of government, there's civil government, church, family, and stealth government, and this is where I hope to take some of the pressure off of you all. As part of civil government, it's not your responsibility to make sure that every individual is taking proper care of themselves, it's the responsibility of individuals to self-govern and make educated decisions for the benefit of their own health. I mean, you're looking at a guy who in March was, every, every grocery item that I brought home from the store, I scrubbed, I was wearing a mask, I didn't let anything in the house that, that hadn't been washed. I bought into, to the media, and, and, you know, I was concerned, and when I sat back and, and looked at the facts, you know, I was able to, to realize that, you know, ninety-nine percent of the people, healthy people at least, who contract the virus survive. So I, I, I think that, you know, even with numbers being overstated, admittedly overstated in various places, we're seeing a ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent viral rate among, at least among healthy people. So I would just challenge us all to take a step back and consider the facts, and, you know, I reckon, and I know, I don't want this to sound like I'm anti-mask, I'm not, I support anyone who wants to wear a mask in public, I'm just anti-mask mandate. So I, I think we need to recognize that this is a legitimate virus, but let's stop, you know, buying into some of the panic that's being spread, and especially the panic that's being created by the media. And lastly, I just, I, I ask that you, please, don't overstep the bounds of the city council, the citizens who elected you are counting on you to show discernment for facts, and not make a decision based solely on what others and, what, what others are doing. Let's trust the citizens of Edmond to, to make informed decisions for themselves and for their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, next up is Provi, Provi, I'm not sure the, the proper pronunciation here. Okay, I've up to five minutes.
Yeah, it's actually Providence Farm, sorry. Jennifer Webster. Hello, gentlemen, again, I'm at my business today, twenty-eight fifty-one West Edmond Road. I emailed you guys today, and I totally understand, it was later in the day, I didn't expect a reply back, honestly. David, you did reply, though. I, so, first of all, I understand being tired, and being tired of this debate, but I want to tell you, gentlemen, I'm physically tired. I put in ninety-six hours last week, running both my businesses, trying to feed a community, and enduring the overwhelming, besides the hate, but also the overwhelming support of our stance of being pro-choice. We had probably this weekend in my business, sixty percent of the people wearing masks, shopping, happy to be shopping, and then the other forty percent not, all of them commenting how much they enjoyed the freedom to come in my business and choose what to do. I know that we have paraded a lot of doctors up here, actually, Dr. Khan isn't a doctor, he's a data specialist in the healthcare industry, so I think it's important that we clarify that. But I want to talk to you guys about something. We keep talking about science, and we just seem to really have a love affair of science. Me, I'm kind of a history girl, I love history, because I believe when we look to history, we can see how to handle the future. So I'd like to bring up a couple points where science, and I'm just going to stick with a couple to be respectful of your time. Science at one point believed that putting leeches on human beings to draw an infection was a good idea. History has proven that science was wrong, and the data manipulated. Science said in the nineteen twenties that doing lobotomies on people with mental health issues was healthy and acceptable and a good way to treat mental illness. History proved that was wrong, and not only proved that that was not a healthy form of treatment, also history documented the LAPD throwing basically their girlfriends or women that would expose them into psychiatric wards to have those kind of things done. There are many, many, many atrocities documented by history. Again, if you look to the history and make decisions based off of history, we can make better determinations for our future. Have any of you gentlemen ever read the book written by John Barry called The Great Influenza of Nineteen Eighteen? That's actually factual history about a tried and true pandemic. Do you know that in the summer of nineteen eighteen, that at least one dead body was in a house or on the front porch, awaiting, because they were so overwhelmed, awaiting a corner to come around and gather up all the dead bodies? Do you know that it was also documented that people would get on a trolley car to go to work, and by the time they got to work, would fall over dead? That, my friends, is true statistics, and that's truth and documented well in our historical books. That's a true pandemic. The numbers are so beyond lower than that, I, I'm sorry, but I'm kind of chuckling at, like, the days that the numbers are lower, something's wrong, we're going to have to recalibrate, that really does give me pause. Another form of science being manipulated is the asymptomatic study that the CDC came out and said, oops, sorry, we based that off of one study, it turns out that person did have symptoms and wasn't really asymptomatic. So I think I've made my point in the fact that science can go either way, and what we need to be doing, again, is looking at history. During the nineteen eighteen pandemic, we did not trample all over the Constitution, we did allow herd immunity to happen, and that was like a really atrocious pandemic, people literally dropping over dead in thirty minutes. What we're seeing is not the case, and yet we're dangerously trampling on our Constitution. That piece of paper, two hundred years ago, must be protected at all cost. We, the deaths are low, the hospitalizations are lowering, and I would just ask you gentlemen to think about this, you are going to be remembered one way or another, I do, I am sorry for the burden that you're having to bear, but you were elected to be leaders, and so I would leave it with this, what will you be remembered as, lions or sheep? Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Nick, five, number two. Okay, you have up to five minutes.
I'm Nikki Rao from Ward Two, I believe.
Which neighborhood?
Bradbury Corner.
Okay.
Well, first, I guess I want to say that I fully agree with Providence, Matt, and Gwen, I didn't write anything out, so I apologize if I stammer or jump around, but I, I fully agree with them. Yeah, I appreciate the equity for the previous speakers, but I've heard conflicting information and read conflicting information from all sorts of experts throughout this pandemic, I mean, even the CDC has, you know, Dr. Fauci has flipped, and not necessarily because of what information he gathered, unless he was lying, because in the beginning, he said that they weren't necessary, that they created a false sense of security, and then he flipped because he said that was just to leave more masks available for the healthcare. So then I don't know when, when people are lying, or not, the experts that are out there in the media. I think that it should be left to individual businesses to make that decision. I, I do believe it's like a false sense of security, because there are also very many different masks out there, you have the ones with the little, they're not N ninety-five, they have the little vent, which is just spewing out unfiltered air, unless you're going to mandate what kind of mask people can wear and regulate that. I'm sorry, tried to write things up. And so I guess, that's basically what I want to say, and even the World Health Organization, what did they say? That the masks, there's no direct evidence that the universal masking of healthy people in the community prevents infection of respiratory diseases or viruses, including COVID.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you, okay?
Okay, next up is Costner.
How many more do you have, Casey?
Currently, we have seven. Costner? Okay, up to five.
Okay, I'm Anna Costner, I live at thirty-nine twenty White Hawk Road, that's up in Coffee Creek, and I am for the mask mandate, I really, I've read a lot, and I've looked at a lot of studies, I've listened to the CDC, I've listened to epidemiologists and professionals, even the ones that have talked here, whether they belong in Edmond or not, I think they know what they're talking about. I do believe that if you have a mask mandate, you're going to have more people wearing the mask, which might help keep from spreading it. When I wear my mask, I always consider the fact that I'm probably even a little bit protecting other people. Maybe I, I'm not protecting myself, I'm protecting somebody else. I realize that, that the virus can go through these masks, but I also think it makes us a whole lot more conscious what we're doing when we have the mask on. I, I was in Oklahoma City just this last weekend, and I noticed how many people were wearing masks. I went to TLC, they were even wearing masks outside and in the greenhouse, honestly. And I come back here to Edmond, I go to the grocery store, I see a group of five young teenage boys prancing through the grocery store without masks on. They think they're healthy, and maybe they are, but they're not doing me any favors, I'm seventy-one years old, I would really like to be protected. I think that if you make the mask mandate, you're going to have a bigger percentage of people wearing masks. I realize not everybody will do it even after you mandate it, but I think it'll be a bigger percentage because of the mandate. I don't think that's taking rights away from people, I think that's giving rights to people who really want to be protected. I would like to do this, and everything that I've been here lately is, if we mask up, and we can get the majority of us to mask up, we will move through the virus quicker, it'll, it will start dissipating, and that's what we want. We want to be able to go back to school, we want to be able to go to football games and basketball games, we want to be able to go in and out of stores without worrying about it. I want to go back to church, physically go back to church. And, and I think that if you look at statistics and say, oh, well, Edmond's not so bad yet, let's not wait until it gets there. Let's do something, let's be proactive. Norman has been proactive, Stillwater's been proactive, we are also, you know, think about that also, okay, when you make the decision. I think it all takes the pressure off of individual businesses. You go to an individual business and they have it up, people say, oh, well, they're going to have to have a mask, I'm not going to shop with them. If everybody's wired to have that mask, it takes the pressure on individual businesses, which with what you're doing right now, letting them make the choice, it puts the pressure on them. And, and there, a lot of those businesses, they're having the people at work, they're wearing masks, they're wearing masks, but they're letting everybody in the door, with or without masks. And I say, I, I really think it helps the businesses for you to mandate the masks. I am seventy-one years old, I've got a lot of friends that are my age or older, and I think that you owe it to us, my, my granddaughter, I take care of her part of the time, my daughter is a healthcare professional, she's been very, very careful, and yet I have to help with my granddaughter, and...
You're, you're breaking up, Ms. Costner. Thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And so, is my time up?
Yep.
Next up is Heather Warlick.
Hello.
You have up to five minutes.
Okay. Hello, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for letting me speak, I know you're getting tired, it's getting late, and I actually had not prepared anything to say, and wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I do have a few things to say quickly to you. I am a mother of a ten-year-old, and I'm also a, the owner of a home daycare, a small home daycare, I have five small children, and I'm petrified to send my daughter back to school, because I know that, at least to my understanding, for elementary schools, masks are going to be optional. And my daughter's very, very responsible, she, we wear masks everywhere, but I know that even she might very well say, okay, bye-bye mommy, love you, get in the, you know, get in the school and take her mask off. And I don't really feel like it should be the teacher's responsibility to, you know, mandate, you put your mask back on because your mom said you need to keep your mask on. And I think to me, it's, this issue has a lot to do with elementary school kids wearing their masks, because they're, you know, with all the kids that were tested positive, what was it, eighty-three kids, I think in California, testing positive, and they take it home to their parents. If I were to send my child to a public school rather than doing the virtual option, we would not be able to see my dad, so she wouldn't be able to see any of her grandparents, all of her grandparents will be isolated, as they have been for the last five months. And we're now talking about a matter of mental health for the elderly and already lonely people in our community. We're talking about the mental health of our children, because they are isolated, and have been for five months. My daughter's been isolated for five months because she's an only child, you know? I want this to be done with and over with, and the only way that that's going to happen is if everyone participates. And if we have people out there who just disregard everyone else's health because it's inconvenient to them, we're not going to get this thing over with. I have a few more notes. Whenever other community around us is mandating these, is mandating masks, it makes Edmond look like the do-nothing, don't-care, privileged city that doesn't care about each other. And that's not the Edmond that I know, I grew up here, and I defend Edmond, I love it, and I speak so highly of Edmond, people want to say, oh, Edmond is just a bunch of rich people who don't care about anybody else. I say, no, Edmond cares about people, we look each other in the eye, we say hello, we wave when we drive, we let each other into traffic, we are good people who care about each other. But when now we have a life or death situation, and we turn it into a political fight, that's literally going to kill people, that just to me is not Edmond, that is another town, it's not Edmond. When people spout statistics, they need to spout sources, okay? Don't spout numbers, and don't tell me where you got those numbers. I'm also a former journalist, and I know that you can make up numbers all day long, and it doesn't matter, okay? Tell me where you got those numbers. All right. So, you know, it's disrupting to families, dogs, and the economy when, when we send our kids back to school, we have an outbreak, and we have to close that school, then everybody's got to go home again, and work from home. As you can tell, I'm a little bit, you know, leeches and lobotomies, no, it's not, it's not what we're talking about. Trolleys picking up dead bodies, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about avoiding something that could be a really huge catastrophe in our town, so I guess, you know, that's basically my point, is I don't want to be the do-nothing town, when I'm used to being from Edmond, Oklahoma, that takes care of each other and our citizens, I'm used to being an Edmondite, and I, and I hope that we stand up for each other and really do what we can do to protect each other.
I'm, thank you very much, Ms. Warlick.
Okay, next is Andy Roberson, or Roberson, I'm not sure which pronunciation. Okay, next is Andy Roberson, or Roberson, I'm not sure which pronunciation. It's Roberson. You have up to five minutes.
All right, thank you. First, thanks to each of you for your service to the Edmond community, and thank you for the opportunity as a citizen of Edmond to be heard. Forgot to mention, I'm Andy Roberson. Live at 3008 Blackstone Drive in the Black Oak neighborhood in Ironhorns. I'm here to speak in full support of a mask mandate for the city of Edmond. Immediate action is required to safeguard our public health, necessarily while minimizing the economic cost of doing so. We must take steps to flatten the curve in order to minimize avoidable suffering and death, and especially to prevent our healthcare system from being overrun. Absent another total shutdown of the economy, the next, the next best option that we have is to require, to require all citizens to wear a mask in public and especially indoors. This is proven effective many times over at this point across the country and around the world. All of Oklahoma City's major hospitals support a mask mandate because they know this to be true. Without this simple step, things will only get worse as COVID continues to spread like a unchecked wildfire. Obviously, a total economic shutdown can flatten the curve, but the cost is unbearably high, especially to small and medium-sized businesses, their employees, and most importantly, to our children. The best available alternative to a total economic shutdown is a mask mandate. The Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce knows this, hence their support for a mask mandate as well. I'm not sure what the Edmond Chamber's stance is on that. Based on what we're seeing for ourselves every day, it is clear that there are many who are not wearing masks when they can and should be. It may be because they are adamantly against it, or perhaps they just don't believe it is necessary. But a mask mandate sends a message. It is necessary and is, it is required. I can tell you that I saw a healthy increase in mask-wearing at work in Oklahoma City today, even inside our non-public offices where the mandate doesn't even apply. It is clear that the Oklahoma City mandate is already having the intended effect of more mask-wearing in the community, and an Edmond mandate would do the same. In closing, there are those who are willing to trade public health for economic growth, but those people are doomed to have neither. This is the path leading directly to the overrun of our healthcare system and a completely avoidable economic shutdown. The best way to keep our Edmond businesses open, and the best way to get our children safely back to school, is to implement a mask mandate and flatten the curve. I respectfully request each of you to do what is right and clearly needed and vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that.
Next, next up is Lauren's iPhone, and then Mr. Mayor, we have five left after that currently. Okay, please introduce yourself. You have up to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Adam Hannah. I'm an ICU physician, pediatrician. So for me, I know all of this has been very contentious. And, you know, of course, being an ICU physician, I followed it all very carefully at the beginning. And, you know, two weeks before this really became a big national lockdown, I, we took it upon our family itself to stay inside the house, like limit our traveling to a high extent, and I only went to work. And of course, I work at a hospital that has, you know, a significant degree of COVID that we see. And so, at the time, there was no mask. We were wearing them at the bedside, but not anything really else. And so even, even me, like literally hands dripping and hand sanitizer, ripping, like taking my glasses off and wiping them to every single little minute area and bathing myself for probably much longer than I probably needed to, I contracted the virus since 19. And I'm assuming it was either from just maybe, you know, touching my, touching something into my face. I honestly, I think it's probably from traveling in elevators, because the virus is known to stay in the air for an extended period of time due to the respiratory droplets. And I know that all this gets very confusing, and everybody's talked about it like a lot, really. And there's a lot of lame and people trying to understand this. It's very difficult to understand. Even me, like you think, like, okay, somebody sneezes and you can kind of see that in the air, and you see, you know, once it falls to the ground, you should be okay. But there's even smaller molecules that are there. And so I think just me standing in the elevator got it. And I wasn't one of these, like, you know, like, as fortunate as Governor Stitt is right now, feeling okay. I came suddenly ill. I, I was on call and I absolutely got a severe headache. I, I, I got dizzy, cross-eyed kind of feeling, had to sit down. You know, my blood pressure was affected. Took my temperature, it was, it was high. And within the next few days, like that night, even that very night, I called my family just in case I thought that I would make it. Because at that time, we didn't know, and people were just, are dying from it, and they are still dying from it. And because the mortality rate is so high. And so I literally sat down that night and I wrote letters to all my family, like I'd be never see them again, because I knew that if I got more tired, that I wouldn't be able to do that. And over the next few days, I became progressively short of breath, and I have very, very mild asthma. I'm, I'm pretty young. I'm 36 years old. And I became so ill that I, 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 I didn't think I would make it, honestly. I, I was sleeping 22 hours a day. My oxygen was in the 80s. I was not breathing well. And so when people started, you, you know, having more of these masks and more knowledge is coming out about this, I started becoming more hopeful. But we're still a week, 10 days, I'm still 103-degree temperature, being checked out by doctors. They say, you know, I got tested for the virus, and that's what I have. But I still was not, still, still feeling well. And eventually, after two weeks, I got well enough to go back to work. And even since, since, since then, I've, I have a persistent cough that I can't get over, that I have specialty doctors working on. So this thing is, it's, it's bizarrely infectious. And, and so, so many of us think that, like, okay, and, you know, you take an anecdotal poll of local people, well, how many, how many people do you think has had this virus? And people say, oh, yeah, I think it's probably been about maybe half. You know, I think I had symptoms back in November. Well, they've done random antibody testing on people, and especially the Oklahoma Blood Bank has a good idea of the random population. We have only like a 2% or 3% incidence of that. And there's already like hundreds of deaths. I mean, there's 140,000 people that have died in the United States. And for us to even get close to where we might reach herd immunity, which they, generally, that's considered to be 80%, at least with vaccinations. It, with the virus, I mean, we probably need at least 50%. If we got down to the mortality rate being half, half percent to 1%, you're still looking at like over probably 2 million people dying of this. I mean, that's literally like, I mean, like the, the lady from the Conscious Co-op talking about people being dead at every house. That's literally what will happen. And so even though we want to avoid this mandate as much as we can, because it's, it's just mildly inconvenient, there's, there's just really no way to do it and stay safe. We need this mandate to keep us in our country, in our, our state, in our people, healthy. I mean, literally, I'm in the hospital caring for people that are dying because of this thing. And it's not, oh, it's just the flu, or you have a certain time to die. You can avoid this. You can prevent this. You can take mask. You can wear masks. You can sanitize your hands. You can wash your hands. There, everything that can be done to avoid this should be done. If, there needs to be more than a mask mandate, we need more. And it's not about our freedom for ourselves. It's about everybody else's freedom.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up is Dr. Jeremy B. Mode. Turn your camera off just for a second. You don't have to do anything. You have up to four minutes.
All right. I can't do any better than, than Adam did, than Dr. Hannah did. I know him pretty well. And he's probably one of the smartest people I've ever met. I wasn't gonna speak tonight either, because I have the last two meetings, and I don't really think I have a whole lot more to say until I started listening to some of the things that were being said. And there's still this confusion of aerosols and droplet precautions, and what masks can, can keep in and keep out. And people still don't understand the difference between an aerosol and a droplet, and how this thing is spread. And the masks are designed to keep droplets in, and the virus is attached to droplets. And so, yes, they do filter things out. Someone mentioned that, you know, Dr. Fauci flip-flopped on things in the past. It was, yeah, because we didn't have enough E. I was there, like, people were having to reuse the same mask and the same gowns over and over and over again. I mean, we were there. The guys that were in the ICUs and the hospitals, we lived it. This was not fake. I don't have a, I've got a bunch of sticky notes, and I can't read my writings, sorry. You know, we're talking about mask compliance. You know, there are, there's a study by, that Goldman Sachs produced, whose only interest is to get the economy back rolling again, and showed that if 15, that if, that on states that have mask mandates, you would increase compliance by 15%. And so can you imagine how many more people would be able to wear a mask? You know, another person mentioned that, yeah, there's gonna be people that are gonna be dying. But, I mean, how many people have to die for it to make a difference? I mean, what's the number? Tell us the number that you feel is appropriate before this is okay. I'd like to know that, which is important. One of my friends died this weekend because of it. Someone I knew, this is not just something that affects other people and, and, well, I've heard it affecting other people, but it doesn't matter because it doesn't affect me. It's not the truth. Dr. Hannah and his whole family were affected by it. So there are people out there getting it. You know, the statistic guy, I'd like to see where his numbers are, because I don't think they match up with anybody else's. You know, right now, I sent you guys an email this weekend, and just with some reports, the governor's report that the White House, that Dr. Burks, that Mayor O'Neill mentioned earlier sends out, and they have identified Oklahoma, specifically Oklahoma County, as a hotspot. And during, if you're in a hotspot and in the red zone, they do recommend a mask mandate and to do everything possible to control this. What else here? I also brought up the fact that, you know, Edmond, OU Edmond is a COVID-free hospital. We really want to keep it that way. We think it's important for the community, especially in a community that has a large elderly population and a large nursing home population. We want to keep that COVID-free. If the hospital system is overrun, not just with deaths, but with incidents of patients with hospitalizations, we're not gonna be able to keep it that way. We think that would be horribly detrimental for anybody in the elderly population or the at-risk population. It was interesting about people talking about science and doctors and, you know, how we did things back in the past. And, yeah, I saw, I saw a meme, I love memes, on Facebook, and it said, "We gotta send kids back to school so that one day they can be doctors and scientists, and everybody can ignore them." And so that's kind of how I feel right now. And, yeah, medicine, we've done some pretty stupid stuff in the past. But the thing is, is I think we always try to do what we think is right. We always try to admit when we're wrong. There's somebody in the background.
One minute.
And, and the funny thing about science is that when we try to prove something, there's 20 million other scientists and doctors trying to either prove us wrong or prove us right. And if it holds up, then it becomes fact. And that's what we're trying to do here. Yeah, we don't know everything about this disease. We have no idea. We're just doing the best we can with the data at hand. And a mask mandate, I think, would go a long way in increasing compliance and help us get this thing under control. We want to be, we want to be proactive and not reactive, especially since it's a few weeks school starting. And if we wait for this, you know, this, this new guidance that you guys have put forward to come into effect, and to wait two or three weeks to see if it's worked, it may be too late, and we're right in the middle of the school year. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mode. Who's next, Casey?
Next up is Kristen Mug.
Hi.
I have up to five minutes.
Hi, my name's Kristen Mug. I live at 3832 Old Georgetown Road. I'm in Ward 3, I believe. And then I own a business, Mug Winston. It's in a estate planning law firm that's in Ward 1 at 10th and Bryant. I'm not gonna repeat what the physicians, the scientists, the doctors, the folks who have, I know Councilman Moore has mentioned that many, many experts and physicians, wearing masks helps. How much it helps, we don't know, but it helps a little bit, and it's a pretty minor thing to do. I want to talk to you about, from a small business owner perspective, and hopefully talk to you about some things you haven't heard tonight. I have 12 employees, 10 of whom are residents of Edmond. We have nine children among those employees, five of whom will be attending Edmond Public Schools here in a few weeks, four in daycare in Edmond. We have two spouses who work at UCO, two who are teachers in Oklahoma City. And our employees are scared. They're anxious. They're nervous. Last week, we put the sign on our door that said, "All clients coming in must wear a mask." We all wear a mask. We have Plexiglas in front of our receptionist. We have Plexiglas in our conference room. And I will tell you, today, one of the other tenants in our building walked into our space without a mask. And just was like, oh, well, I know you're supposed to require masks, so I won't stay in here very long. I'm telling you, if it were a mandate, then people would not walk into my office without a mask with that sign on the door. I went to North Park Mall. I'm showing my age, because I can't walk outside. It's too damn hot. So I go to North Park Mall and walk. Went three times last week. All three times, I saw five or six people not wearing masks, and they were all like, you know, looking like, look at me not wearing a mask. I went today, not a single person without a mask. It's not about enforcement. If the law's the law, it's the mandate, it's the mandate, people will wear them. They may be mad about it, but that's the rule. And I think it's just, I mean, that's a real practical example of the fact of the difference of a mandate versus a recommendation. Because my sign's real big, and it's on a glass door, and that glass door is shut, and I had someone walk without a mask who read it and saw it. So I'm very passionate about having a mandate. And I feel safer going to places in Oklahoma City where I don't own a business and where I don't live, because I know that it's a mandate. And I'm ashamed of the city that we can't do the same thing, that we don't have. And, and you know what? It's a shame that people aren't listening enough and compassionate enough that even if it slightly helps someone else, that you put a piece of cloth over your face, that you wouldn't be willing to do it. But the truth is, there is a definite, and we saw some of them tonight, who think it's their right, by gosh, to not wear a piece of cloth over their face when they go into a store. So unfortunately, I think a mandate is necessary. And somebody mentioned earlier, it helps me as a small business owner. Every time I talk to a client, it's like we're doing Zoom meetings, we're doing phone calls, and if you have to come sign a document, and I have to notarize it and witness it in person, you have to wear a mask. I'm constantly telling them they have to come in with a mask. If there's a mandate in Edmond, that's real helpful. But I'm scared to go to restaurants in this town. I'm scared to go to other businesses in town when I don't know that it's a mandate. So I, I think we listen to people who are experts in their area. You want to talk about a state tax? I'm an expert. I'm not an expert in science. I'm not a physician. But the overwhelming evidence of the
One minute.
physicians is that they help.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up is Chrisanna. Next, Chrisanna.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chrisanna.
Yes, I apologize. Forgive me. My camera, for some reason, isn't working right now. I have no idea why.
That's okay. Go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
All right, thank you so much. My name is Christine Schultz, and I live at 136 Landon Drive in Edmond. And I am coming at this from a little bit different perspective than some of the perspectives we've seen tonight. And I, before I say what I have to say, which I first have to say, I didn't plan to speak tonight, so I will be just speaking from my heart. And wanted to let you know that I am incredibly appreciative of each and every one of you. It's so beautiful to see how much you are putting your heart and soul into caring for our community, and we really, really appreciate you. I also want to let you know that I have been in the natural health and wellness field for over two decades, studying, applying, working, doing all kinds of things. So I'm looking at this from a pretty different perspective than maybe some of the medical experts that are looking at numbers and that type of thing. I'm looking at this from a perspective of what makes our bodies healthy. I look at immune system protection. I look at emotional, emotional health and wellness. I mean, that's a part of it also. I also have a master's degree in counseling, so I'm also looking at this from a mental So I'm also looking at this from a mental health space as well. Before I get into some of that, I wanted to backtrack just a little bit because we were tonight pretty overwhelmed with the numbers. The numbers, as we've talked about in the past, are very manipulated. We can't rely on them. Yes, if you want to look at the CDC information, they're going to, they're putting out certain information, but they do keep changing it. There are doctors that are stepping up. I can name off the top of my head, Dr. Richard Bartlett, Dr. David Brownstein, Veritas Medical out of Lubbock, Texas, Dr. Rashid Bittar, Dr. Michael Levitt, Dr. Stephen Gundry, Dr. Kelly Victoria, Dr. Pamela Poppy, and the list goes on. That would come into this forum and give you exact opposite information from the doctors that we heard from tonight. So I'd like to kind of stay away from those numbers because honestly, we don't, we don't have accurate numbers. And I don't think any of us can deny that. What we do have and what we all agree on is that we're talking about a virus that has a 99.9% recovery rate. We're talking about a virus that affects, you know, the death rate, it ranges from 0.07% to 0.02%. It's going down and down and down. The infection rate seems to be rising, but of course, we also know the testing rate is rising. And we also, I'm not sure anyone's brought this up, so I'm going to go ahead and bring this up. But I, I know, I think it was last week that somebody said, "This virus is not like the common cold." And I wanted to just bring up a point that while it's not seemingly like the, like the common cold, maybe in experience or in the fear that we have of it, the structure of this virus is similar to the structure of the common cold. The coronavirus is a family of viruses and the structure is similar. It's similar enough that our T cells can cross react with, with the COVID. And so a lot of us are going to test positive for it if we've had a common cold. The other thing is, you know, the heart immunity issue. There are other studies out there that show that we're actually close to that. So again, I don't really want to talk about numbers because every single number that's been brought up tonight can be disputed. One thing I would like to bring up is what Mr. Khan said about common sense, taking care of ourselves.
One minute.
Washing our hands, wearing a mask. I would like to know when we have ever worn a mask before. We, we succumb to the flu. 60, 80,000 people every year succumb to the flu. We aren't required to wear masks. We had over a million people die from, what was it? Anyway, last year, I'm sorry, I'm hurrying, so my brain is going. Bottom line is, masks are harming people. They haven't been proven to be, have efficacy at all. There's way more studies out there showing that they are harming people, not only physically, but emotionally and mentally. And that, that's what we're seeing across our, you know, that's what I'm seeing everywhere. So people are in fear right now because we don't have accurate information. But if we will just learn to take care of ourselves, laugh, love, be in sunshine, drink good water, eat healthy food, stress less because the fear is opening up our immune systems, go back to those common sense things. And yes, absolutely, protect the vulnerable populations. Stay away from them, of course. But there is no proof of efficacy that masks are helping enough to stop this virus. So at any rate, I appreciate your time. Like I said, I wasn't prepared to speak, so I didn't ramble. I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Ed. You have up to five minutes.
You're on.
Mayor, Councilman, this is Ed Rhodes, a physician, has previously served as the chief medical officer at the Oklahoma State Department of Health after a 40-year career in public health. I retired effective January 1st of this year before the pandemic began. But I'm a resident of Edmond in Ward Four. We live in the Homestead addition. The, I wanted to share some information with you in relation to just about face masks in general. They are an effective public health intervention. They've played a critical role in other states and nations around the world that have successfully controlled the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19. And I feel that because of this, we need to seriously consider that and pass a mandate for a face mask in the city of Edmond. We need a mandate that's enforceable for people of all ages in, 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 in public places where we don't have so many exceptions that it renders it ineffective. As far as reasonable, you know, reasonable people are not willing to put their lives and loved ones at risk to enter the unsafe environments that currently exist in public places and businesses, especially those that are indoors, to protect the health and the safety of the citizens and to maintain the economy of Edmond, I would ask you to please do your part in helping make our city safe by passing a face mask mandate. The Harvard Global Health Institute currently shows Oklahoma County as one of the red risk zone areas in the country. And at this stage, as far as their recommendations are, our state should, our county should be putting in a stay-at-home order or lockdown because of how serious the situation is here. It's actually past the time when a face mask mandate would control the virus. They're saying that there needs to be a lot more done than that. As I was looking at the news later, this, earlier this evening, there's a news from the OU Health Medical Center that indicated that they were opening up their search capacity, Phase One expansion of their ICU unit because they're currently full. And most all the other hospital ICUs in the metropolitan area also are almost full as far as their ICU capacity. Edmond doesn't exist in isolation from the rest of Oklahoma County. We're all in this together. Many residents in Edmond are at risk due to medically vulnerable conditions or over the age of 65. It is not safe for them to be in public places unless everyone's wearing a mask. If they wear a mask, then they're not fully protected. They're doing their role in protecting others if they have it. But other people that are not wearing masks are not protecting those people that are around them. The, the data from the last two days should in no way be, from the State Health Department, should in no way be interpreted as the cases are going down. They have a data entry glitch and their data is incomplete. All the developed nations around the world that have successfully controlled COVID have included use of a face mask mandate. The, there's been a number, there's been multiple studies that shown that cloth face masks, contrary to the information you've been provided tonight, are effective in controlling the spread. They're not as effective, but they can be up to 60 or 80% effective, depending on how many layers you have, compared to an N95 mask, which is up around, you know, close to 95, 90 to 100% effective in preventing the spread. The, it's false that.
One minute.
Ineffective. It's the, and just, you know, wearing a face mask is not an issue of individual rights when it comes for citizens to take a person, when citizens fail to take personal responsibility and endanger others by not wearing a face mask in public places. Government has a responsibility to protect the health and safety of its citizens. Governments provide these protections through existing statutes or emergency powers, whether it be by enacting a face mask mandate, laws that prohibit smoking in public places, or traffic safety laws. The, so that, the, and, you know, the data that you see on recovery of patients that the State Health Department reports, they just have to be alive for 14 days and not die or be in the hospital. The reports I'm hearing is that, you know, up to 75% of symptomatic patients still experience symptoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ed. Thank you very much. Come on in more, Casey.
This will be our final comment. We will not accept any more hands after this one. This is Elizabeth Wiener. I apologize if I got that wrong. Okay, you have up to five minutes.
All right, thank you. Mayor Dan, thank you, Darrell, David, Josh, Nick, and Casey for moderating. I really appreciate y'all hanging on here. I feel like you are saints having to listen to everybody. So thank you very much and thank you for letting me wrap this up. I view masks as a personal liberty to decide whether you should be able to wear one or not. I heard back from Nick today that that's something he still stands for, is a, the liberty to decide whether you want to wear a mask or not. I think that's how our country was founded, was founded on the right to decide as a citizen what's best for ourselves and not have government dictate that for us. Benjamin Franklin even said, "Those that can give up essential liberty to gain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." And I feel that's what happens when we start mandating whether we should start wearing masks or not. I feel like that's a personal responsibility of each person. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I fully support that if that's what you want to do. If you're a business and you want to make sure that nobody wears a mask, do that. Instituting laws don't necessarily make someone do it. It gives consequences to if someone doesn't wear a mask, but it doesn't enforce anybody actually doing it. So in the spirit of liberty, I would ask that you all vote no to our mask mandate and let everybody continue to make the decision for themselves. So thank you for your time very much. I really appreciate that. Y'all are awesome.
Thank you very much. We're not really voting on anything tonight. We're having a discussion on perhaps direction. But that concludes our public input. Council, do you want to make a few final comments or maybe some suggestions for staff as to what actions we'd like to see them have in between now and next week?
Well, I don't have any comments for staff right now, but I do have some comments just for the rest of the council. Is that we've all talked about this being, not wanting to stop the economy and the economic impact from it. I also look at it from that way too. But if Oklahoma is designated, or any of our counties are designated as hotspots, there is a potential economic impact to our community that people coming to Oklahoma, when they go back to their respective spots, may have to quarantine for 14 days, which I have seen in my, in the past few months that has prohibited other people from traveling because they cannot afford to quarantine for 14 days. We also need to take into account that for all of our small businesses, for all of our businesses that have employees, that if they become sick and they don't have enough replacement staff for them, that is going to affect the economy also. And so the, to the supply chain has an opportunity to be affected as other people become ill with the virus. And so that's something else we need to, we need to consider is that mask mandate or not, is that our decisions will potentially affect the economic outcome for Oklahoma and even Edmond. So that was the main point I wanted to talk about today. Just also think about, in three weeks, Edmond Public Schools is going to be reopening. And how that's going to affect, I know that families are struggling right now on do they put their child in daycare or do they put their child back in school? Do they homeschool? They have those big decisions that they have to think about. And that is, that I know is a daunting task for them to do. So we just need to think about and look at it, all the information out there. What, what else, is there any other additional information that we can receive that could possibly help us make decisions that could help protect the citizens of Edmond and even the surrounding communities? One of, I think I sent you all a note. I sent a note to Matt. That's also look at the ZIP codes that are for the school system. Because the school district is larger than, than the Edmond proper. So we, just in three weeks, those children who are living in Oklahoma City or the surrounding ZIP codes, they will be in our community in three weeks. So we're going to grow a little bit. And so that is something else to think about, the potential impact that can have for us. So. And then, as I've always said, we've talked about recovered. There is not even a fine response or answer for what recovered means. And some people that I know personally, they're saying, "I haven't recovered, I have survived." Because, but I haven't recovered yet because I still have ongoing systems, symptoms. But the way the system has defined it, they drop off the list. They go into the corner on the right since you recovered, but they still have potentially lifelong symptoms. That's all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
Josh, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm, I just want to ask the council a question and it's a sincere question. What is our point here? What is our role? Seriously. I, I could be having dinner with my family right now. We're not going to vote on something or we're not going to encourage people to follow CDC guidelines. All we've got here is a forum for people to argue with each other. We've had doctors on one side that are telling us we're in a hot zone and what the CDC is telling us and what their education is telling us and giving us advice. And we have another side that all they're doing is arguing that information. And all we've done here is just created a forum for that to happen. If we're not here to set policy for safety, then I don't need to be here. I can be having dinner with my family. I don't want a forum just for people to argue back and forth. I am getting 200 emails that from people that are under the impression that it is our job to set safety policy. We're doing it in building codes, we're doing it in traffic laws, we're doing it in drug enforcement. If we're not going to do it on this, then let's tell people. Because frankly, tonight, we could have sent out a press release and said, "There's been glitches in the data and we'd like you to put a sign on your door." And I wouldn't need to be here. So what is our role? To just listen to people argue back and forth? So I'm going to speak to my heart. If we are not going to set policy and we're not going to vote on something, then I'm going to talk what's from my heart. I am not here to take rights away from people. We lowered a speed limit in downtown Edmond four weeks ago, which took away somebody's right to speed in downtown Edmond. We did not hear from one person about that, that we were taking away their rights. Didn't hear a thing. This is not to take away somebody's rights. I want to protect my neighbors. I want to protect my mom who is elderly. I want the best-case scenario that's possible for my kids to go back to school in three weeks. I want my wife and I to be able to go to work. And many other families in Edmond, where both parents work. We want to do that. I don't want community spread. I don't want compound growth or exponential growth where families need to go home and quarantine and wait for tests or wait for system, wait for, wait for tests or wait for symptoms to wear. They're not going to work. And our supply chain is interrupted and our economy is affected in Edmond. So again, why are we here? Because I'm, there's not a purpose for me to be here right now.
Well, we didn't have it on the agenda to make a decision.
Why not?
Well, because we didn't, okay?
Mayor, I'll make one more point that's been bugging the heck out of me. The Oklahoma City City Council met with the Oklahoma County Health Department for six hours, set up an individual meeting, a designated meeting. We have not invited one medical professional to talk to us, not one. We have been sharing our own opinions and we have been getting information from Matt. And bless his heart, Matt is not the Oklahoma County Health Department. We are a city of 95,000 people and we are right next to Oklahoma City and we are in a hot zone. We have not had one person come and talk to us that is a medical professional. I am so thankful for all of the doctors that are agreeing to volunteer their time to come into the public comments. I am so thankful for that. And I am thankful for the other citizens that are coming and talking as well. But look at what other, what the other councils are doing. They are seeking medical. They are seeking medical counsel, medical advice. We haven't done that one time since this whole thing began. So again, what is our role here?
Our role is to get our community through this safely. Okay? That does not mean, well, now, there's a, there's a difference of opinion on that. How many people have?
For people to argue.
Okay, we've listened to you, Josh. It's time that you sit back and let us talk a little bit. This is a tough decision for us to make.
We have made a decision.
Can, Mayor, can I talk now?
Go ahead.
I know exactly why I'm here and I know exactly what my job is. And my job is to represent the citizens of Edmund. And I think what we saw tonight is an interesting example of a challenge that this council and every council faces. We had a number of people, doctors included, who argued why we should wear masks. And they're very smart and very sincere in what they were saying. And I will guarantee you, they didn't change the minds of anybody that was on the other side. The other side would argue that they shouldn't have to wear masks and they have all the reasons why they shouldn't. And I promise you, they didn't change the minds of any of the pro-mask people. And I would, I would challenge you, you know, if if someone dropped in from outer space here suddenly and sat in my chair and said, "Listen here for the next, the last two hours to what everybody had to say. They didn't know anything about this beforehand, but listen to what everybody said." And what would your decision be? And I promise you, they couldn't make one because there are strong arguments on both sides. And so how do we, how do we as a council decide what we're going to do on a policy? Because clearly, there's not a clear cut right or wrong based on statistical evidence here and what the people are feeling. I'll give you an example of just these last few days. I countered it up on Saturday. I got thirty nine emails from people begging me not to pass a mask mandate. Four people argued that we should. On Sunday, I got twenty seven emails asking me not to pass the mandate. Six people thought we should. Yes, today, thirty six asked me not to pass a mandate. Seven said that that we should. By my count, and of course, this is certainly not any official poll by by any means, but it's pretty clear to me that there's a heck of a lot more people that don't want the mask, they don't want the mandate than there are those who who want it. And so I think at the, at the end of the day, and the various citizens that I've talked to, they've, you can argue whether they're right or wrong, but they are citizens and they're entitled to be heard and they're entitled to have their, their, their opinion. And they don't want this to happen. We have, I like our current declaration. We've allowed the businesses to decide what they want to do, masks, no masks, maybe just masks for employees. And citizens can decide if that's good for them. If they're looking for a place that requires masks so they can go shopping, there are plenty that will accommodate that. If you don't want to go into a place that mandates masks, you can find people that do that. Personal choice, personal responsibility, that's what it comes back to. So I know why I'm here. I'm here to represent our citizens and and I think that's my job. And because of that, I'm going to stand on the side of our citizens, the majority of our citizens. And I will not vote for a mask mandate. David, you want to speak now?
Mayor, I believe that the opinions have been given. I don't know that I have much more to add.
My thoughts are, is we're trying to get compliance. And we started a path for the next two weeks till the third of August till our next meeting to try to figure out if we can encourage people to adopt and wear masks on a voluntary basis. Oklahoma City's showed some goods, had good responses to their mandate this past weekend. But I saw and spoke to some people that were involved in how they're trying to enforce that particular mandate. And it's pretty close to chaos right now. I won't say it's out of control. I just said, there's a lot of people complaining. And that was always our drawback on doing mandatory. Because there's no good, solid way to enforce it and to take staff's time to try to go out and arbitrate people's opinions on whether they should or should not wear masks. So we don't have a good answer for mandating and enforcing it. We don't have a good answer. And that ultimately is what it boils down to. If we had a really effective, simple way to do this, to do and make it happen, that would be great. But but it's not going to happen. Okay? And I'm, I mean, a lot of people have tried it. A lot of cities have done different things. And I'll have to give Oklahoma City credit. They've, they've, they worked at it real hard. Okay? But now we're watching it in progress. And so I'd like to just watch, sit back, let's watch how they're doing and let's, let's evaluate how we're doing with our approach to try to talk the community into being involved in this and to make it happen. You know, ninety percent of the people that started this whole program, you know, when we shut down business, the businesses voluntarily did it. Before we ever got around to making our proclamation, half the restaurants had already closed down because they literally bought into this. And so our community has succeeded a lot in getting voluntary buy-in to our plans for the pandemic. And we'd like to make that happen and give it a chance to happen and talk to the people. I went out and talked to five or six businesses that didn't have theirs posted today. And they were very, very apologetic for not doing it. And I've got, I've got a handful now and I'm going to take them out and I'm going to walk around town and ask, you know, make sure that they get it done. I like this idea. I think it's a great idea. And I think it's innovative and I think it's something that fits Edmund way of doing things, trying to ask and trying to control people and trying to convince them it's good for the community. And that's, so that's, that's where I'm, I'm at on this issue. I agree with Nick in his, his response. I would like to be able to, but we are strongly, strongly recommending the wear of masks. We are, we are already positively on board for that. We just haven't done the step of requiring mandatory, where we go out there and we have to play mask cop or have mask marshals in all of our stores out there and keep people separated because somebody's not wearing it. And you know, if, if you have a next door neighbor like the lady that just spoke that works with you and comes in there and ignores your policy, you're not going to change him by passing an ordinance. All you're going to do is make them fight. And I don't want that. That doesn't work well. And there are just some people that are not going to do well in this environment with it mandatory. And we'll have to deal with that. At least that's my theory. We have no action, actionable action on the council other than to ask staff to monitor our progress on this, see what our numbers are and get back with the citizens. And maybe there's some areas that we need to look at, like some of the services that can do a better job of mandating masks on a personal basis. Okay? I'm thinking particularly of the people that are involved in nail salons and hair salons and barber shops. You know, some of those things like that, that if, 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 if the health department, and we, you said we don't have them with us. We've been going to Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting with our county health officials. We've been attending meetings for the state health department. I've listened to the governor, I've been with the governor when he's done some of his proclamations. We are really involved in it. We just don't, we're not the only town in Oklahoma County. And we're a big town, don't get me wrong, we're a big city. But we don't have, we don't command the same audience that Oklahoma City does. And I'll just simply say it that way. But we do meet with them. Our staff meets with them every day. They had meetings today with them, talking about cases and examples of where the tracing was. So we're definitely involved with the county. And I know they haven't come out here and done a showboat for us. But if you, if you think that's worthwhile, I'm sure Dr. McGuff will be glad to come down here and give us a show and tell us about what's going on. And maybe the citizens perhaps need that. You know, these things, these meetings are going on and they're going daily. And they're right on top of us. And somebody says that our numbers aren't right. They're the best numbers we got and they're, they're, they're calculated every day and they're hammered out every day. And these things, these numbers that we have for our community, for our count, for our areas are closely. And we've only lost ten citizens since we started. We haven't lost in a month a citizen who has died in our, in our area. And we're very grateful for that. Don't get me wrong. And maybe the data might be off one or two here, wherever the person was. But half the people that have died in the whole state of Oklahoma came out of nursing homes. And no one's talking about that either. So anyway, I think we had a very productive meeting. It's important that we have an opportunity for our citizens to talk. And hopefully, we'll get through this, Josh, and everybody be all together. Thanks, Daryl. Any other comments for staff or with the audience? A motion to be adjourned would be in order.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Raise your hand if you want to adjourn.
See you, guys.
It's unanimous. Thank you all very much and thank you, audience, listening to this. Appreciate it.